Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 13th, 2025 New Bern Board of Aldermen meeting. If you would, please bow with me for a quick word of prayers. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity today. We thank you for the rain that was much needed. We thank you for the ability to come together and do the business of your city. We ask you, lead, guide, and direct our words and our actions tonight. In your name we pray. Amen.
You please stand with me as I pledge allegiance to the people of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll.
Alderman Prill?
Here.
Alderman Roryl?
Here.
Alderman Astor?
Here.
Mayor Odom?
Here.
Alderman Kinsey?
Here.
Alderman Bass?
Present.
Okay, Board, item number three is to approve the agenda. Are there any changes you'd like to make?
May I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, agenda is approved. Next is request and petition of citizens. First up is Kim Crum.
Hello, my name is Kim Crum, and I'm in Bobby Astor's Ward Three. I've read through the potential bond issue proposals, and I feel strongly that the Aldermen should approve all three for inclusion in the October ballot. By the time the city manager and budget officials request a bond issue, they have few, if any, other options for payment of essential long-term improvements. In this case, two for infrastructure and one for large improvements to our Parks and Rec program. In the case of infrastructure, you don't have to live in New Bern very long to notice the standing water that occurs on so many roads in even the most gentle rainfall, much like those we had the last couple of days, let alone the daily juice we get in the summertime or heaven forbid another hurricane. Improved sidewalks and walking paths would provide a much-needed upgrade in both safety and appearance for citizens and the visitors we have to our city. As for Parks and Rec, one of the concerns that has been noted recently is the gang violence that seems to be occurring in New Bern. To me, keeping our youngest and most vulnerable citizens active and engaged in positive activities is vital to the future of our city and to our communities. Adding upgraded ballfields, swimming facilities, and similar services should be a priority for all. We cannot keep deferring maintenance on every front, including opportunities for community development. I urge you to vote yes on including all three bond issues for inclusion in the October ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Jesse Mars.
My name is Jesse Mars. I'm the president of Juneteenth of New Bern, which is coming to you guys to give you a synopsis of what our plans are for this year's festival. As you, most of you know, this is our third year as an official city-sponsored event, so we just want to say we're grateful to you guys. Thank you for partnering with Juneteenth of New Bern. Just to go over a few of our events and schedule for this year. Can we get a who ray for Juneteenth of New Bern? We have an exciting festival of exciting seventeen days of events for this year. A few of those events will be our promo week, which will be June 9th through June 12th, which will consist of various media platforms that we'll be using to promote Juneteenth of New Bern. Those promotions will be done by radio, television, and also podcasts. Then we have also our Bahamian John Canoe workshop. We'll have dignitary school becoming from the Bahamas and Ghana, who will be partnering with Juneteenth of New Bern this year, doing a few different types of events such as, for those who don't know, John Canoe is a cultural event that stems from Africa, but also the very few places that celebrate it in America will be Bahamas, Jamaica, and actually North Carolina. So those are the three main places in the world where John Canoe is still celebrated. So the dignitary group from the Bahamas, they'll be coming, they'll be doing a workshop, they'll be showing imports of John Canoe. And then we'll have our Juneteenth Art Walk, which will be at the Craven Arts Council. We'll have our parade and festival, which will be located on Broad Street at the Five Points intersection. And we'll have our fireworks show that night, our big fireworks show.
What day?
Oh, I'm sorry, on the fourteenth. And a few different other events that we'll have that'll be located, that'll be within those seventeen days. We'll have our Community Health Day. We'll have an HBCU D9 Youth Service Day. We'll have our Stanley White Tribute. All of these days fall consecutively to each other, and those days are stemming from June 7th all the way to June 23rd. So this is something that isn't done through any other organization in New Bern, one of the longest celebrated festivals in New Bern. We thank you guys for your support. We have our boxing tournament this year that'll take place at Wards Boxing Gym. We'll have a Juneteenth of New Bern bonfire, which will take place on the 21st. Also, we have a skate night that'll happen at Rollerland, where we'll have up to 120 kids that'll be able to come and skate for free. So it's a big celebration. We'll do some awesome things, and once again, we thank you guys for partnering with us. And the basketball tournament for the Montford Point Marines, that'll be something else that we'll be doing this year as well. So it's a lot of things that'll take place over these seventeen days.
It's free.
And it's free. Website, we're still building everything. We're still trying to get a lot of our funding in place. We're three-quarters of the way towards our funding. Our website is juneteenth, what is J-O-N-B-N-C.org. So if anybody wants to continue to donate towards Juneteenth of New Bern and sees the value of what we're doing as far as celebrating our community, June 19th of 1865 is a big part of American history, so it's something that we'll celebrate all together. So anything else?
And Cruz. All right, next is Cynthia Blake.
Good afternoon. I had the opportunity to attend several of the Aldermen's meetings. My concern is with your sound system. It's very hard to hear and it's kind of hard to understand what people are saying. Believe it or not, today is not too bad so far, but I wish you guys would work with, do something to upgrade it and make it sound better so we can hear better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I don't need to introduce myself, but I'm Cory Hunter. I live in Ward One, and I am grateful that we have an Alderman, and Rick Prill is in that position. I know firsthand he works for the good of the city and for the good of the ward. I've had that experience with him. As an Alderman, he deals with municipal policies, city ordinances, and he deals with concerns from citizens in his ward. He and all Aldermen deal with legislative functions, budget oversight, and public engagement. The ward's Alderman is the place for citizens to voice concerns and to give encouragement. It seems that Ward Six has not had an Alderman for nearly the past ten months. If that ward has to wait for the next election, then it will be nearly a year before a new Alderman is in place, ready to serve. I believe that this situation is not acceptable, and as I said, I am grateful that my ward has an Alderman, specifically Rick. Since the Alderman is the link from the people of a ward to the city government, it is imperative to have that position built, especially when there is somebody willing to serve until the next Alderman is elected, and I thank you for your time.
Next is Alderwoman Jamisha Harris.
Good afternoon, Board. Mayor, I'm going to speak on the budget, but I'll wait for the public hearing. The reason why I'm speaking under petition to citizen is for the Ward Six situation. Being a former Alderwoman and sitting on the board and understanding that if this seat is available, technically you would have a special call election, and only Ward Six individuals will vote who would sit in that seat. I think it's unacceptable that it is, like she said, ten months, and we do not have anyone sitting in that seat. That is a representation of everybody on this board, and that's a problem for the community as a whole. We don't have full access to opinions because we don't have someone sitting in that seat. Regardless of how anybody leans, we need to know that when we sat in their seats, Ward One, Ward Two, Ward Three, the mayor, and Ward Four or Five could not speak for Ward Six when it comes to being elected. When you vote in October 7th, only Ward Six individuals can vote for Ward Six. Everybody gets to vote for the mayor. We need to understand that as a community, as a city, that what is happening to Ward Six is not right, and it needs to be rectified way before we get to October 7th election. There is things going on, hurricane seasons, the budget being passed. We need seven voices to speak for the entire city.
Next is Carol Takarski.
Very good.
Getting better at it, I think.
Getting better. It's a two-a-car and a ski. My name is Carol Takarski. I live on Pine Valley Drive. I am here to ask that Darlene Brown be put in temporarily so that we can have Alderman representation on this board. She is a, she is a very qualified individual. She was the executive director of Partners in Education for twelve and a half years for the Craven County Schools, coordinating between C. Smith Reynolds Foundation, BSH, the Department of Defense, the Bate Foundation. She's very well-qualified. She was the director of marketing at our local chamber for five years. She has been involved just recently with the Duke Center Institute for Cancer in their fundraising. She has been on many boards throughout our community and is very qualified to know what we're doing. I worked with her on our first Christmas venture. I was the, I am the retired executive director of the Arts Council, and we started the downtown Christmas with the Dickens of a Christmas, and Janet Frank Core and myself painted thirty-some panels to show in all the stores downtown so people could start a wonderful Christmas shopping downtown, and that was partly because of Darlene organizing it through the chamber. She's a very active and caring person in our community. She was on Public Radio East as a vice chair. She served on the Swiss Bear and Coastal Women's Forum. She is qualified to be Ward Six Alderman. We need her, and I also agree, we need an Alderman during the hurricane season that we can make contact with. I request a motion to be made to appoint Darlene Brown to the vacant seat of Ward Six.
Next is Mark Pennett.
Hi, my name is Mark Pennett, and I'm a resident of Ward Six. I live in the Greenbrier neighborhood. There's a bit of a theme going on here. My companion and I have lived here almost three years, and for a third of that time, we've not had an Alderman representing us. So as public servants, you all give of your time and energy in order for local government to be effective, and me and everybody appreciate that. And because you serve, I must assume you're all believers in good government. So good government to me, and to many of my neighbors, means having proper representation at the local level. Not having a Ward Six Alderman therefore deprives us of the same representation as the residents of the other five wards, and to me, it's not an example of good government. So let's fix it tonight. We've spoken with many of our neighbors in Ward Six and have gathered 175 signatures on this petition requesting the Board appoint Darlene Brown as the Ward Six Alderman to finish out the current term. So again, as believers in good government, I ask on behalf of my neighbors and 175 people who have signed this petition, that a motion be made in second tonight to appoint Darlene Brown as Ward Six Alderman, and to me, there's not a reason not to do this. Thank you.
Next up is Thomas Priest Jr.
Good evening. My name is Thomas H. Priest Jr. I'm a resident of New Bern, Ward Six. I live on Pine Valley Drive. I come here before you to voice my opposition and displeasure and disappointment that as far as in this diverse community, I come here and I find that I encounter at the first level of a governing body injustice. My ancestors have fought and died and bled for justice, for the right to vote, to fight the right to be represented fairly and equally, and when I have heard of this unattended and vacant seat, I am more than appalled by this. Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King said to us, and many of you have attended, an annual Martin Luther King Jr. celebration. And in that you attended, I assume that you support him and agree with him and participate in his, where do we go from here? At the last celebration we had, I mentioned about a report card that we're going to start acknowledging. King didn't want us to come here and to just celebrate his birthday and said he was a great person. King wanted us to continue the work. He passed the baton to us to continue the work, and we have yet to have a report card. I must share with you that this next celebration of King, this vacancy of unfair representation and no representation for citizens of a diverse community is unacceptable. I plan to share that as part of the report card on things we need to do to continue the work of King, that one day we may live in a beloved community.
Good evening. Mayor, members of the Board. My name is Ethan Gaskins. I live in Ward Six in Cypress Shores, just down the street from you, Mr. Mayor. You guys have heard from others already about why Darlene Brown is the right person to fill the vacant Ward Six seat. I'm not going to repeat what they've, what they've already said. I'll just say this, we're way too far into a vacancy that's left thousands of us in Ward Six without a direct voice. That's not just a procedural issue, that's literally we're paying taxes, that's taxation without representation for Ward Six. As a younger resident, I want to build my life here in New Bern, specifically in Ward Six. I want it to be a place where people my age can afford a home, start a business, feel like we belong in the civic conversation. But it's hard to believe in a, it's hard to believe in a system that lets seats sit empty for as long as this one lasts. When young people see that kind of disengagement at the top, it pushes us away from public service, from local investment, from putting down roots. We start to look elsewhere at cities that are listening, acting, and including us in the process. That hurts New Bern, not just today, but in the long run. We can't afford to lose another generation of engaged citizens just because we're failing to act on issues like this at the local grassroots level. We need a government that works and that includes every ward having a seat at the table. So tonight, I respectfully ask the Board to do what's right, make the motion, fill the seat, restore Ward Six's voice, show us that the city believes in equal representation for every resident on every street. Thank you very much.
Next is Susan Nemowitz.
Hello, Mayor and Board of Aldermen. I am not in Ward Six. I'm actually in Ward One. I'm here on a totally different mission, and that is to share with you that my role at Craven Community College is to instruct folks to be successful in their lives, and I've been doing that for six years as a job readiness boot camp instructor over there at the RCS Building, and we instruct people how to find jobs and become successful with creating resumes and building mock interviews and things of that sort. What I found at the end of the two weeks after all these years is there's some folks that go out and they do find a job, but they may become disengaged in that job at that time, over a few weeks, a few months of getting a paycheck. It's like, all right, so why, why am I in this position? And then maybe they just don't go anymore, so they have different thoughts about really what to do on a job once they are hired. So I went and researched this and became a gold certified. It was called the Ice House Entrepreneur Mindset Program, and I instruct that at the Vault Center, Monday and Thursday evenings, and at this time, I just wanted to share with you, we teach folks how to make good choices, to look for opportunities, to take action and gain knowledge in how to be successful in their lives, not just through a job, but through hopefully a career, whether it's through the Vault Center or some community college classes that they want to take or a degree, but to find out that there's just not one path, and that is find a job and get a paycheck, but to become fully engaged in what they are doing and what they are looking for in these opportunities that may come up, because as we know, the world is changing really rapidly. Jobs are going to go away, new jobs are going to pop up. People need to just be prepared to look for these opportunities. What's happening right now is the course is going on, but less and less people are attending, and I'm fearful that it's just not going to keep on being held. So I ask for your assistance in maybe getting word out. It's called Taking Charge of Your Life, and of course, again, it's at the Vault Center, called Taking Charge of Your Life, and anyone in the audience that would like to reach out to the Vault Center, it's called Taking Charge of Your Life, and I really appreciate your time today, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Helen Robinson.
Good evening, Board. I'm Helen Robinson, and I live at 1906 Cayenne Court, and that is in Ward Six. So I'm here tonight because we've gone more than nine months, as you already know, without representation, the empty seat up there, and unless you take action now, it's very likely that that seat will remain empty for another eight months. Y'all, it's really way past time to deal with this. It's way past time. You've already heard a good resume of Darlene Brown, and that's who I'm here to speak on behalf of. She's experienced, she's skilled, she's principled, and she's ready to work. Tonight, you've heard a lot of people talking about this, and you just heard, I think Brenda just received the documents with 175 signatures. A lot of us have been busy talking to our neighbors over the past ten days. You might also notice that there are a number of people in the audience wearing hats to say number six. These are our friends that are here tonight. Hope you don't disappoint. So we urge you tonight to come together as a board. Come on, let's pass a motion to appoint Darlene Brown to fill the empty seat for Ward Six. I'm going to urge you to vote unanimously tonight as a board for this motion, unanimously. Tonight, you have a chance to show these citizens here and all the ones who are going to watch this video that you listen to people and that you have the desire and the skill to solve hard problems. Tonight, you have a chance to shine. So let's get this solved tonight. There are a lot of other important issues coming before the city. Let's solve this one and move on.
Next up is Laney White.
Mayor, Board of Aldermen, good evening. I am here in support of Ward Six, even though I am in Ward Four. I really appreciate having representation and all the community coming together tonight. I hope you guys are proud of us because we've, we've worked really hard, and we really hope that Ward Six can have representation, just like the rest of us do. Thank you so much.
Next is Christopher White.
Good afternoon, Board. My concern is a few weeks ago, Greg Murphy, or a lot of concerned citizens spoke about their concerns about the visit of Greg Murphy, and I was wanting to know if the Board has made any efforts to reach out to Greg Murphy to have him revisit New Bern and speak to concerned citizens.
Okay, Board, next up is the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the Board on items five through 12?
I have a question. I don't know if you need the motion first, or you want me to discuss?
We can discuss first.
Okay. I'm looking at item number nine on the consent agenda. Adopting a resolution calling for a public hearing. I was looking at the agenda packet, and it reads that the amended amendment was requested by a citizen and is supported by the staff. I'd like to ask, how did that citizen arrive at asking for this amendment?
Mr. Manager?
I'd like to ask Robert Goff or Jessica Rue with Development Services to come up, and they can answer that question.
Is that item number nine?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Evening, Mayor and the Board. So this particular text came about because someone from the public wanted to take a piece of land that had plans for six homes on a lot, and currently with our processes, that would be required to go through a major subdivision process. Because of the number of lots that he needs, which is six, we could not put it through the minor subdivision process, which is a little bit more abbreviated, but still considers all of the things in review from all the other departments. So when they presented us with this issue and they came up with the idea of amending it to change the lots from four lots to six lots, we took it to the Planning and Zoning Board, and they supported it. The caveat to that was they wanted to have a limit on the size of land that could be subdivided. Currently, it's five acres. The proposal would be six. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. I just wanted information as to how the citizen arrived at needing the amendment.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the consent agenda?
Mayor, hearing no further questions, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Prill. Let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Frill.
Alderman Frill?
Yes.
Alderman Roriel?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next is item number 13, recognition of New Bern 101 graduates. Mr. Hughes.
Mayor, Alderman, since 2021, we have been offering the New Bern 101 program, and in that time, we've had over 120 graduates. And this is a program that allows citizens of the City of New Bern to learn more about local government. So it's almost a nine or 10-week program where citizens come in, they learn about administration, all of the various departments, they're able to have hands-on experiences, they're able to meet with some of the governing board as well during that period. And I look forward to hearing what some of the graduates tonight have to say, but we think it's a great opportunity for anyone that wants to learn more about local government to get involved. Our next session of this will be offered next spring. We won't do one this fall. So Colleen, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Aldermen. Week nine of this program concludes tonight, in which the participants get a look at local government inaction and the passion of folks who come before you under request and petition of citizens and other issues. I'm delighted to introduce you to the 16 people who are graduating the program tonight, some who have made up classes from previous seasons and some who have been with us the last nine weeks. I told them last week on the bus as we went to the fire department, they were one of the most inquisitive groups we'd ever had. So I'd love it if you would come down off the dais and shake their hands as we call them up one by one. And graduates, as a reminder, we'll call you up again at the end as a group to take a big group photo. Once we call you up, we'll have you start at the right with the city manager, Mr. Hughes. All right. Chip and Kathy Hartzell.
You recently moved into Ward Six, so the board would have to call you a present.
All right, don't sit down, Carrie. All the graduates come stand amongst the board, and we'll take a big group photo. You can bring your certificate. All right, we have to get a log. All right, holding out your certificate. Everybody smile. I would like a picture of just the board alone, and then if you can get online, please. If you haven't taken a picture of the board, I would like to see your signature.
Take the picture. I was going to take the picture.
Okay, now what you've all been waiting for. Item number 14, conducting a public hearing on the proposed budget for FY 2526. Ms. Ostrom, you want to kick us off?
Sure. The proposed budget for, can you hold on? The proposed budget for fiscal year 202526 was presented to the governing board on April 8, 2025, and a budget workshop was held on April 28, 2025. The board adopted a resolution calling for a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed budget, and a notice of this hearing was advertised as required by statute.
Board, have questions for staff before we open the public hearing?
Can we wait for our questions afterwards?
Sure.
That's my preference. I don't know about the board members.
Okay, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. If you have any comments regarding the proposed budget, please come up to the microphone.
Good evening, Mayor and the Board. My name is Carolyn Perrigo. I live at Ward Six, Chissy No. Code, in Ward Three, and that which is represented by Mr. Astor, who I'm pleased, I'm very glad I have representation, by the way. I don't have a Number Six hat on, but I'm with him in spirit. In my, I'm retired now, and I'm kind of mute in New Bern. And in my career, I was a asset management, financial asset management for commercial real estate, so investment real estate. And every single day, I worked with my accounting department, or their, my clients' accounting departments. We were audited constantly because our clients were companies like Teachers Insurance, Aon, Mass Mutual, anyone who has commercial real estate as part of their, you know, asset strategy. I have led the budget. I actually printed out all 347 pages. I like it. I like doing that. It's kind of a nerdy thing, but it speaks to me, so I enjoy it. I also came to your budget workshop, started at nine o'clock, we left at three. I lived a lot, and I appreciated everyone's comments. And then I had the great opportunity to meet with Mr. Hughes yesterday and ask any other questions that I might have, and I had some, and he answered every single one. The thing that is just kind of niggling at me right now is I didn't, when we have a Director of Finance in our city who has like pirated our city to three awards now, I don't know how many years, but an award-winning finance department, and someone who doesn't know the city can come and lead her work, and she communicates well, her, the budget, which is amazingly complex, and, you know, the government enterprise funds, the general funds, all the different things, it's a credible amount of work. Then at the budget meeting, she said she was working many more hours than she should have been. I could barely, because in my career, there was, I had to do the same thing. She's asking for an Assistant Director of Finance, and it is so, such an important position for several reasons, but one, she needs backup. Two, really redundancy, the old hit red bus theory. Really more than one person to understand the magnitude and all the amounts of the big picture of a budget, not just each department, but being able to put all of that together around what the sources are built with the whole thing, and make it all pay out and make it bounce. So I'm here to say, please, please consider supporting her and moving that position for an Assistant Finance Director. Thank you, guys. Thanks for all you do.
It's unlimited time under the public hearing, ain't it? Okay, so I just want to say, she laid, Janice Harris, she laid the foundation of what needs to be said again for the work that you do, being someone on the outside and on the inside dealing with the budget. It is the most important job that you do here, and it's my least favorite because they're both, the people come up, they tell you what you need, and we have to make those decisions. Which brings me back to saying that you need a second person because of how much our budget is, millions of dollars. We don't have anyone in Ward Six, right? We pay taxes, we understand how the budget is. I hope everybody understands, and I'm speaking to the family because I need y'all to hear me and understand this. As a community, we come up here and we speak from emotions sometimes, and I had to learn that sitting on this board, that I can't be emotional. I have to speak with logic. And the fact that we know that we've been through Florence, and we have a hard time getting FEMA money, and we talk about making sure that we have qualified people that do this work, you have to think about this seat. The fact that there is a gap before we have an election, I don't stop anybody for one, and I feel every seat needs to be contested. I believe in voting, and I believe that that's what you should do. But please understand me when I say, right or left, you need someone in that seat now that understands the inner workings of the government at the current state that we are for the City of New Bern. We are the last governing body in the City of New Bern that is not parties, it's nonpartisan, and we have to keep it that way. So when you come up here and speak, I speak no disrespect, but you need someone that is currently qualified. When it comes to July, when we put your name in file and you run, go ahead and run, everybody run. But you need somebody sitting in the seat that already understands this budget, period. And whether you agree on who that person is or not, if we all close our eyes, we go to work and clock in, and FICA, and all the taxes that come out, you want all of the money that you work for to be allocated down to zero and justly in this city. And to do that, you need seven voices. So we have to come together as a community and check it. Vote to make who needs to be in there, but be logical and not emotional about the decision. You need someone that is experienced, someone that can come here and say, I agree, and vote for, to have an assistant.
Alderman Harris, you can continue. I was just going to tell you to make sure you tie what you're saying into the budget because that's what the public.
The bond referendum. We talk about violence. We need that to be passed because money will be allocated to Parks and Recs. We have Martin Marietta. We need an amphitheater. That money will bring in money to the community, affordable housing. So please vote and support the community, support and vote for the bond referendum.
My name is Aneth Fagel. I work with Easter Seals, Fort Health, and in partnership of Trillium Health Resources and One Community. While these organizations are not part of New Bern Parks and Recreation Department, they do collaborate with local agencies to provide inclusive recreation. they do collaborate with local agencies to provide inclusive recreational and wellness programs for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. In my role, I work directly with families and individuals in New Bern and Craven County who are navigating challenges like mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance abuse. I see every day how access to youth's programs, inclusive services, and community-based support changes lives and prevents crisis. As you consider how our city allocates its budget, I encourage you to invest more upstream solutions, like Parks and Recreation, youth development, mental health services, and not just reactive approaches, like increased policing. These programs help prevent crime, strengthen neighborhoods, and support our most vulnerable residents. And I do have some questions that might have come up for me. What exactly are you asking the city to do? I'm asking the city to shift some funding, especially from overfunded areas like police overtime or equipment, toward upstream services, like youth programs, recreation, and mental health support. These investments prevent future crisis and reduce demand on emergency systems. And are you saying we should take money away from police? I'm saying we should rebalance the budget, and public safety includes more than policing. It includes mental health services, recreation, and youth mentorship. When we invest in those areas, we reduce the need for police and intervention in the first place. And how would we measure success? We can track outcomes like reduced 911 calls, fewer juvenile justice referrals, school attendance, and community participation. These are already used by Trillium and behavioral health providers to show impact. Do you have data and outcomes? Yes, we do. Port Health and Trillium regularly track outcomes like reduced ER visits and fewer juvenile justice records, and I'll be gladly to show those records. And let's prioritize funding that builds a safer, more inclusive New Bern for everyone. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Bailey Evans, and similar to Anna, I am also here to say, I'm a little disappointed that the most, the largest proportion of our budget is dedicated to the police department, when Chief Gallagher has told this board and said in interviews, the social immaterial conditions that are giving rise to the greater gang violence in our city are not addressed by police alone. That's the last stop. That's the symptom, not the problem. So when the police have $20 million more than the Parks and Rec Department, and the Parks and Rec Department is up here saying, "We can't provide as much for the city's kids, because we have trouble finding workers," they need more money. I work in childcare, I'm a preschool teacher, and the way to have quality is to pay them more than minimum wage. And where we're spending our money, where just are showing our priorities are more in being reactive instead of proactive. We need to do better for the youth, we need to make sure that things like the Volt Center and all of that are still staying strong. And also, there's a projected raise in the electric expenses, and that is terrible, because that has continually been one of the things that people talk about, that they are struggling with, is ridiculously high utility bills. So, social and material conditions, people need their money, and people need to, kids need to be safe, they need things to do, so then the police will have less to do. So I am also here to say that I wish that we could direct more money towards the problems and not the symptoms. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Board of Alderman. Thanks for letting me speak tonight. Looking at the budget, the electric fund expenditure summary has a non-departmental expenditure of $2 million, two, three, sorry, $2,645 and 300, or 370, sorry, 2.6 million. And where, what is that, how is that calculated, and what is it for?
So, we have to have a balanced budget, that is, the revenues over expenses, so that's additional revenue that is then appropriated back to their fund balance, basically their savings. Ultimately, hopefully increasing their cash on hand.
Oh, good. Okay. Thank you. I emailed the city yesterday, so I'm just trying to cover all my bases here. How are the shared services calculated? There's $1.1 million in shared services. From the electric to the general fund.
Okay. So that is calculated based on our cost allocation plan, it depends on what you're looking at. So if they're paying for, let's say, human resources, and they're reimbursing their fair share, it's based on employees. So it just depends on what category we're looking at, and it's shared, that is allocated with all utility funds. So everybody pays their fair share back to the general fund for those services.
Okay. Thank you. And it looks like there's $3.3 million, and it's more than it was last year, and inter-fund transfers from the electric fund to the general fund, is that due to the 12% increase in rates from last year, or what, how is that, how is that number calculated?
Okay. So that consists of two things. One is the pilot, which is payment in lieu of taxes, and that, actually, I have that number, that consists of $369,481 for electric share, and it's a percentage on their capital assets. The, I'm sorry, that's calculated by the avaloreum tax rate, multiplied by their capital assets. Then there's a rate of return on investment, that's 5% of their gross annual revenues.
Thank you for clarifying all that. With that being said, if the, the Director of Public Utilities has come before this board at least since 2019, well, he came on board 2018, right? Came on board, and he's been saying that the wires are being stretched with all the development, and the system, there's, the development is just happening, like, as has been said in the past, as a zigzag pattern. And it's really extending the wires, and it's getting to the point where there's a real heavy load on the system. That's my understanding of what's been said since 2019. What is your plan? I don't, I don't understand how this is, it appears that this has become a political situation versus listening to the department head saying over and over and over. I don't understand why the board is not addressing this issue, there's so many different people and businesses that rely on this system. I'm not a City of New Bern electric customer, right? So I'm not personally affected, but this affects everyone, whether, I don't know if the hospital's under, you know, getting electricity from, from city or Duke, but if they're getting it from the city, I mean, everyone is relying on the hospital. So, I just would like clarification on, on that. And also, I understand the FEMA funds have not, they've been, they've been held up, at least last time I asked, last time I was here, I think. How is the city going to cover those funds if we don't get reimbursed from FEMA? I know they haven't been paid by, for the Stanley White Building. There's a lot of things that haven't been funded. Is this general obligation bond, I understand money's coming, going to parks, streets, and stormwater? I think all those, all those departments are tied to the FEMA money. So is this money for the general obligation bond, is it going to be former than Marietta, as has been said, or can it also be used to cover the items if we don't get reimbursed by FEMA? Like, that never comes, because this is, you know, what they're doing at the federal level, they may not be dispersing FEMA funds, and we'll be stuck with those dollars, and that's all.
So I do, I will say this, if you get a moment and go to our website and look at the monthly report, collaborative, collaborative report, which I think is what you're referring to, it gives you the breakdown of the FEMA expenses versus what we received back in reimbursements. And as of the last report, last month's report, the city paid $32 million out of these, right? FEMA reimbursed 25.6 million. We are still waiting on 6.3. They are in process, those reimbursements have been submitted.
Right.
And they will get processed over a period of time. We cannot get some of that until these projects are closed out. We have submitted for closeouts, I think we have four that went recently, so that will happen, these projects are coming to an end, but we have come a long, long ways, and we are not in the position that we were when you look at it five years ago.
And I, thank you. I really appreciate all your hard work. I guess what I'm asking is, the mayor has been meeting with Congressman Murphy, that was reported, and the city manager's weekly or monthly report, since Alderman Astor asked if the congressman could come here. Has that been part of the discussion, as far as, has FEMA funds been discussed, that it will be reimbursed? Like, is there any, because I know at the federal level, they're saying, "We're going to do away with FEMA and let them deal with it locally." And I understand the city has worked really hard to get reimbursed, like submit the paperwork, but if that money doesn't come, I guess that's the whole point of what I'm asking the board. Are you all considering this? If you are, if you just, please.
Okay.
So, and for a little clarification as well, today, the only FEMA funds that have been frozen are for the BRIC grant, that grant amount was 200,000 change. But so far, that is the only thing that we've received notification on from, from the government, and that is a FEMA BRIC grant. The other grants that we have received to do stormwater projects, Stanley White, other things like that, we have received no guidance from the federal government on that. So we are proceeding accordingly. The majority of the grant funds that we received from FEMA from disaster have been obligated. And so, what we've seen across the board is, when something is obligated, FEMA continues. And so, we have had conversations with our elected officials about the importance of grant funds as well, and we'll see what happens with that. So, so when you talk about the GEO bond, the comments you made on the GEO bond, those are for those projects specifically, and if the Board of Alderman gives the permission to go ahead with that, that's what those funds would be spent on. With the electric utility, what I can say is, the electric utility director hasn't made any recommendations on rate increases until last year, and at that time, he originally made a recommendation of a 5% increase over a three-year period, plus a PCA with that. Last year, effective July 1st, the Board of Alderman approved a 6% rate increase, they came back in December, approved another 6%, a 6% increase with a partial PCA, to make that a 12% increase. And what we've seen over that time, and it was discussed during the budget workshop, was, we're not where the consultants thought we would be financially with that. So it makes it difficult for us to be able to look at the, at the financial viability of the electric utility and say, "Hey, we need to spend $20 million right now. We're not at the place we need to be." Hence, in this budget, when, when you ask the question about the $2.6 million allocation, that's going back into fund balance, or days of cash on hand, and we need to continue doing that until we see that days of cash on hand be in a positive situation, so we can go to the LGC to look at either revenue bond or financing for future infrastructure upgrades.
Okay. I guess my, if you look at the past budgets, there's never been a lot, in the last five years, I haven't seen a line item that says "non-departmental," so is that going like in an investment account? I just haven't seen that before, and is it just a new accounting method, or?
So in the past, I'd have to take a look, but he's either pulling from his fund balance to balance the budget, or between revenues, expenses, it was balance. He has more revenues than expenses in electric fund that we've budgeted for. So yes, we're intentionally trying to put money back into what I would call the savings, to help you.
Like a money park or something?
No. I mean, our investments are all invested and then allocated appropriately, but what I'm saying is, this is going back, it's not being budgeted for, it's not budgeted to be expenses, it's going back into their fund balance, increasing their cash on hand, so that when we get to a point to look at the revenue bond, we can afford it. Right now, our cash on hand is like 39 days.
Right.
So we need to, we need to increase that, and that's the goal.
But how has the board let this drop? The days on hand, your policy that was set years ago is 90 days cash on hand, if something happens, it's, we're in hurricane season, last, the Hurricane Florence Charlie was at the electric department for 60 days, right? So your cash on hand right now, 39, 34, whatever the days is, this is, this just plummeted, and it, I'm just trying to figure out what's going on behind the scenes, and that's government, I understand it, I was with the government for 20 years, right? But I'm just, that was federal, this is local, and I'm just trying to understand this whole picture. So thank you, I appreciate all you.
Mr. Mayor, Board of Alderman, I'm John Robinson, I live on Cayenne Court. I'm probably not going to be very popular with some of my friends, because whatever the problem is with our deficits in, in electricity, whatever our problems are, let's get it fixed. I've done disaster work for more than 40 years. The last thing you want to deal with in a disaster is the failure of an electric system. You're going to have, we will have enough problems with wind and water, we don't need to have a problem with an antiquated system. It scares me to hear that our equipment is outdated and it's vulnerable in a storm. We don't need that. At the same time, I want to say, okay, I'll pay more tax to finish Martin Marietta Park. That was absolutely brilliant. I don't know who came up with that, or who did the funding to get that piece of land and to start that project, but we enjoy that almost every week, and it's a gorgeous piece of work, but it's not even half done yet, and it needs to be finished. It needs to be finished. And if you go out there, you see, if you go out there and enjoy the park, you see the diversity of people who use that park, and, and the enjoyment that they get out of it. And that is a healthy community. When we moved down here from, from Virginia, Martin Marietta wasn't there, we heard rumors from time to time about it, about how it might be a park, I had no idea that that's what you were really doing. That was brilliant. Somebody needs an award. And I'm willing to pay some extra tax to see that it gets finished. I'm willing to see some tax, I'm willing to pay a higher electrical rate in order to see that our equipment gets repaired and gets replaced. This is some of the cheapest electricity in the country. Our electric bill dropped 80% when we moved here from Winchester, Virginia. Okay? It's silly, if we're arguing over a few more pennies a month on our electric bill. That's just silly. So, thank you for the work you're doing, thank you for the bond issue, I'll be glad to help you support it.
My name is Suriya Bliss, I'm from Ward 1. I was not planning on speaking tonight, but budget came up, so I couldn't help myself. I'm not really polished, so forgive that, but what I wanted to talk about is HPC reform, historic preservation reform. This is generally considered a Ward 1 issue, but it does- This is generally considered a Ward 1 issue, but it does affect Wards 1 through 6, and it hits us in the pocketbook, because that fund, it, it's funded through the general fund, so everyone pays taxes into it. And then we have to pay for the services that we get with it, which are probably well worth it to create a great tourist destination, but we also have to pay for the burden of complying with HPC rules, which is really, really expensive. Windows are two or three times as expensive as a non-HPC compliant window, you can't do things like clear coat a building, which might be cheaper than fixing the mortar, so what I really like the Aldermen to consider, and I've talked to a lot of you up at the front of the table, is take a deep look at reforming the HPC. There's some really smart things that can be done, that would allow us to still have a historic district, we're federally recognized, we're not going to lose that. One of the things that New Bern does have, it's a certified local government, that title is the title that makes us have to be compliant with the Department of Interior and SHPO, and those rules, Department of Interior rules and SHPO's rules, are the ones that put the lion's share of burden on compliance. If we were to explore things such as being able to give up our certified local district label, we might lose priority access to SHPO, and we might lose some grants, but we would also be able to lift the burden of a lot of the really, really expensive repairs. I put a request into the city to get an estimate for how much we've spent, but I think a fair estimate per year on staffing HPC, as well as complying with repairs, could be 400 to 800,000 dollars. So, if we were able to lift some of those restrictions, do work that still protects our buildings, but in a way that saves money, then we could find money to put toward other things. And it's not going to be a ton of money, and it's not going to solve every problem, but they say when you watch the pennies, the dollars take care of themselves, so I would really encourage all of you, I've called, I've reached out, I've talked to a lot of people, HPC reform can be a win, and we can still protect our districts, thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak on the budget?
Not budget, I want to say, once you start lowering those rules, you lose things.
So, so you need to tie it to the budget, so she did a very good job at playing within the rules, but you need, your comments need to tie to the budget in some fashion, so.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for trying. Anyone else like to speak on the budget?
Mayor, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed, most of the, pleasure the board as far as comments, because we've got action to take under a later item, but if you want to have some comments and questions now or later, it's up to you.
Later.
Later, okay? Wait till later? Okay, moving right along to item number 15, conduct a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance to annex tax parcel IDs 820929002, 820900A, and 820900C. Mr. Hughes.
Warehouser has requested annex the, the parcels in question, which are located west of Downey Drive and north of NC Highway 43 bypass in the area of Craven 30. The property totals 9.46 acres, plus or minus. After conducting a public hearing, the board is asked to consider this request.
Board, no questions? Okay, if there's no questions at this time, okay, Alderman Kinsey.
Is this something that has to be passed tonight? Just, just a, a public hearing for right now?
It's both, both, public hearing and an annex.
Are there concerns that you have, that you would not want to take action tonight?
No, 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 I was just making sure.
Oh, okay, because we've called for a public hearing, it's been noticed and all that, so.
Right, that's been taken care of, I, I'm just wanting to make sure, because I was going to go ahead and make a, 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 adoption that, you know, we, uh.
Okay, well, we'll do the public hearing, and then we'll, we'll get to that next.
Gotcha.
Okay, so at this time, if anybody would like to speak regarding the item number 15, annexing several parcels, please come forward at this time. I don't see anyone, so I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Some.
Have a motion by Alderman Astor and a second by Alderman Pril.
Yes.
Close the public hearing, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed, now Alderman Kinsey, if you'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we annex the tax parcel ID 8-209-29002, 8-20900A,
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Kinsey and a second by Alderman Astor, we beat you to it. Any further discussion regarding item number 15? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next up is item number 16, I'm sorry, yeah, item number 16, conduct a public hearing on an amendment to a development agreement with Warehouser in our company for West New Bern.
So, so Mayor Warehouser has requested an amendment to the 2018 agreement, if you would like to go ahead and, and do the public hearing, the attorney will follow up with, with some particulars on the, on the agreement.
Mayor, members of the board, I think to make this more efficient, as city manager said, this is an existing agreement that requires some minor amendments, that agreement was not quite finalized before the agenda deadline, so it's not before you, so my recommendation would be to open the public hearing, entertain a motion to continue that public hearing to the June meeting, at which time we'll have the final draft of the amendment for you, and can conduct that public hearing in a more logical fashion.
Okay, so I'll open the public hearing for item number 16, if anybody would like to come speak on it, you're free to, but there will also be an opportunity most likely in June. I don't see anyone, so, well, I do have somebody.
Thank you, Mayor, Board, Board of Aldermen, I live in Greenbrier, which was the first development that Warehouser made, I think, here in the area, and it's full of large, mature trees, and when the terrible storms come through, the trees shelter us and absorb the water, and it's a lovely place to live. After we bought here, I looked at the pictures online of the West New Bern development, and I was absolutely shocked at what I saw, of clear-cutting forests and putting a zillion little teeny-tiny crapper box palaces on a whole bunch of pavement. And then, after I lived here, because I haven't been here that long, after I lived here for a little bit, and I saw the tributary that runs behind my house on Basil Drive, that also runs behind Olive Pine Valley in Greenbrier, rise all the way up to the bulwark just behind my house, I asked a neighbor, and was served by the city very promptly with the stormwater guys who came out and said, welcome to North Carolina, there's a lot of water, and they informed me how many acres drained down that tributary as it is now. The whole West New Bern project is going to drain down that same tributary with no trees and lots of concrete. So I don't know what the amendment is, or whatever with the agreement, but I would like to ask the City of New Bern Planning Department, because planning departments can actually plan to save and make a more resilient neighborhood and keep our trees, they don't have to cut every single one down, they can actually work around them, as they did in Greenbrier. They might not make quite as much money, but their communities will survive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody again. Um, I, you might have to direct me, I'm asking for help right now. One day, I was noodling around on the, the GIS, and I saw how much in land taxes that Warehouser is paying, and they pay less for all of the acreage that they have behind my house than I do for my little teeny-tiny house, so I, I feel something about that, I have strong feelings about that, um, so is there a way that, that I can look, where do I look to make that make sense?
Yes, ma'am, you can, if you go to GIS, you can click on that parcel, step one is to determine whether it's in the city or not, if it's not in the city, then there's no city tax, you're just going to get the county tax, which is going to be a lot less than your combined tax, and then there's the nature of the land itself, in the, on, on the GIS, you'll go to the tax parcel description, and you'll see notes there about whether it's wetlands, whether it's developable, what the zone, if it is in the city, what the zone is, maybe agricultural, which lowers the value, so those are the tells that might help you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Anyone else? Okay, board, so I would entertain a motion to table this public hearing, continue this public hearing until our June meeting.
Some.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that meeting is continued until our June meeting. Next up is item number 17, consider adopting a resolution approving the sale of 819 Elm Street. Mr. Hughes.
An initial bid of $2,700 was received in October of 2024 for the purchase of this property, which is a vacant .056 acre residential tract with a tax value of $5,400. The bid was advertised and five upset bids were received. The final bid came in at $5,000 and was submitted by the adjacent property owner. If the property is sold for this amount, the city will receive $2,623.87, and the county will receive $2,376.13 from the proceeds. The property was jointly acquired by the city and county in June of 2016 through tax foreclosure.
Does the board have questions?
I have one for the clerk, um, do you know off the top of your head if the initial bid was made by the adjacent property owner that ended up being the high bid?
It was not.
So, something that the board and staff probably need to consider, Alderman Pril brought up at their last meeting about notifications of things taking place around you, um, I, I've talked to a few property owners that were unaware that the city owned a parcel next to them that we ended up selling, and they said, I wish I would have known, because I would have bought it, and it's probably an opportunity, we've talked oftentimes about these stagnant pieces of parcels of land, that, no, they don't bring a lot of money, I think if we were to maybe investigate something like that, maybe staff could look into what the options would be, we might could increase some activity and interest in those parcels.
I, I will say that this adjacent property owner learned, um, when we took the initial bid, the property, the parcel had a lot of items and cars and things that were stored on it when they were asked to move it, that's how they became aware it was available, and they started bidding.
Yeah, maybe even a sale pending sign, possibly, on the lot, to let people know that they could ask, have a number on there, they could call and ask why, if you had something.
Okay, board, um, what's your pleasure on item number 17?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the sale of 919 Elm Street.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion on item number 17? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next up is item number 18, consider adopting a resolution approving an audit contract for fiscal year ending June 30, 2025, Ms. Oshel.
So last year, a request for proposal for audit services was emailed to 59 firms and advertised on the city and state's websites. After reviewing the three proposals received, a recommendation for Thompson, Price, Scott, and Adams was submitted to the board and approved on April 9, 2024. General statutes requires the board to approve the audit contract on an annual basis, this is the second year of that contract, the cost to complete the fiscal year 2025 audit is $52,500, which includes all major programs required. It is requested that the board adopt a resolution naming Thompson, Price, Scott, Adams, and Company as the audit firm for the City of New Bern for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2025, and authorize the mayor to execute a contract for the same.
Board have questions? If not, I entertain a motion on item number 18.
May I make a motion to adopt a resolution approving an audit contract for fiscal year ending June 30, 2025?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Kinsey.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 19, consider adopting a resolution authorizing the submission of an application with the Local Government Commission for the issuance of general obligation bonds, Ms. Oshel.
The issuance of $10 million in general obligation bonds is proposed for streets and sidewalk improvements, $8 million for parks and rec, and $6 million for stormwater improvements. Voter approval for these projects will be sought at the October ballot. To move forward, the board is asked to adopt a preliminary findings resolution which authorizes the publication of a notice of intent to file in the application with the LG, Local Government Commission, and it authorizes the submission of the application to the LGC. Ted Cole with Davenport is present tonight to answer any questions that you may have.
Board have questions?
Yes, I, I have a question, why are we asking for this to be advertised when we, as a ward, have not even approved the general bond referendum? I know you have a timeline.
Yeah, so this is the next step, and then we have to come back to you on June, it's a June meeting for the next phase, which is when, let me pull that up, the calendar. Do you have the calendar on you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Davey.
Davey.
I'm sorry, I was just pulling the calendar up, um, and this is a calendar that the bond attorneys put together, um, so the, the plan at this point, the next meeting on June 10th, is to introduce the bond orders by the board, file a sworn statement of debt, and call for a public hearing. Public hearing, I believe, is expected to be held on July 8th, so it's just the steps in the process. Repeat your question, if you would.
I believe she asked, why are we authorizing the posting or requests to the LGC when the board hasn't actually voted to move forward with the bonds, was that correct, Alderman Best?
That is correct.
Um, I'm not sure it's a great answer, but that's what the bond attorneys have told us that it is necessary at this stage.
Well, I would assume, so I have to be careful with that, but I would assume that with the posting deadlines, all the public input and all that, if you weren't to advertise or make this request now and wait until whatever that trigger is where the board says, yes, let's move forward, we may be past the time to keep all those advertising.
Yeah, that, that's very possible, very rigid schedule with timing between actions, and certain actions that have to be done in a certain order, I just, we have very little wiggle room at this point in the calendar.
And I think, there to be clear, this is, this is not an obligation to see this through, it is a procedural requirement to continue to consider it as an option.
Does that help, Alderman Best?
Thank you, Attorney Davis, yes.
Any other questions on item number 19? If not, I entertain a motion.
May I make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of an application with the Local Government Commission for the issuance of general obligation bonds?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Best.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Again, this is not an obligation, it's to move the process forward, which is progress, so, thank you. Item number 20, consider adopting a resolution approving the classification pay plan for fiscal year 25, 26, Ms. Hayes? She's asleep, somebody nudgered.
She's just little.
Haven't seen you in a while, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the board, so I stand before you tonight, just requesting that you consider approving and adopting the resolution for. the resolution for the classification pay plan for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. I have provided you with a memo which enumerates the changes that would occur versus the current plan. So we're looking to add a permitting technician, an accounting and audit coordinator, special projects coordinator, and assistant director of finance, and to eliminate one position classification in the way of the administrative support supervisor. Any questions that you may have, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Board have questions?
I do. The assistant finance director, I object to that. What does a senior accountant does? What is their position?
I'm going to defer to the director of finance on the specifics associated with that position. There is a few others that have different functions, so I'll defer to Kim.
Sure. So the senior accountant that oversees the general ledger, supervises the accounts payable person and the payroll person, monitors the transactions that are coming in through the bank and out, does bank reconciliations, oversees, and then we have another one that oversees the, the budget process. That actually was moved to a budget administrator position last year, same classification, but we, we switched that because it's pretty much covered the budget. But she did at the time, parts of the budget as well as revenues and tax reconciliations. And then we also have another senior accountant that oversees the grants and the fixed assets. So they're in the details of the, the daily work in reconciling, preparing for audit, handling the FEMA reimbursements, all of the monitoring and managing the federal and state grants, reporting requirements. I mean, I could, I could keep going on, but generally that's what they cover.
And what about the budget analyst? What seemed like she's at all meetings. I've never seen the senior accountant here answering any questions. There's always been the budget analyst here doing all the work. So I was, I just saw the law, so I'm trying to find out what is the job description for this new person coming in and this senior accountant is second to you. So where would this person's position be to you that has been requested?
So second to me right now would be the accounting manager who oversees all of that in the general ledger and handles the detailed transactions of the audit as well, makes sure that everybody's reconciliation is accurate. They have to turn the work into her for that. She manages the audit for about six months of the year, well, maybe up to nine months, honestly, as we prepare and we go through that and come through. No, that's the accounting manager. We need that position. The assistant finance director, if that's what you're asking for, would help oversee some of the other higher level work in the sense of preparing support or providing support and its technical assistance to the management staff. We have two managers. One's the purchasing and warehouse manager, the other one is the accounting manager. The purchasing warehouse manager, you know, does not have the support that she needs as well, and just spread too thin, to be honest with you, to be able to manage all of that and then to be able to, to successfully keep us working at a high performing level and not burnout. I mean, it's just, it is what it is. So we need that support. And then we've got the budget administrator that's here right now is typically, we do cover a lot of budget related things and she's the one that's answering to those often and helping us get through that budget process, yes, because there's a lot involved with that every day.
I've been on the board for about nineteen years and this is something different to me. I try to keep up with and follow where we are and what we are doing and how things are done, and it's just something unusual to me. And then the second thing is that, the bonus, I'd rather do a bonus than give a pay raise to the department heads because we are trying to catch up with the payroll to pay to the employees for the city. This is where I stand. Because if you look at the salaries here, it's six figures, man, you know, and the guys that's making, let's say a guy making forty thousand dollars a year, okay, versus a person that's making a hundred fifty thousand dollars. You do the math. We would never catch up with them. Those are the things that I'm against. That's just where I stand at. I like to be myself with the work that I put in. I don't, can't speak for no one else because I'm only one-sixth of the board. I like to have the pay status for the board is the same as what the county gets, you know? I just want to look at everything across the board the way that everyone will see it themselves or what their work or what their abilities are to bring to the board.
So just as a reminder, this, this item here is for the classification plan. It does not, while the, the positions that Ms. Hayes mentioned would be included on the plan, that does not mean that when you get to the budget item shortly, that, that those positions would not be funded. So if a assistant finance director position is included in the classification plan and when you get to the budget process, you choose to do something else with that or the other positions, that has no bearing.
So what you're saying is, so we approved this tonight, that wouldn't be a part of that? Is that what you're saying?
The classification plan is just the classification of that title. The budget, when you get the budget, that's what determines whether or not the position is funded.
So Alderman Kinsey, the, the pay plan is what we're discussing now.
I understand.
And what I think the manager is saying is this is just to put the position as an option when we approve the budget or don't approve the budget on number twenty-two. That's when we.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you know, it's in there to be approved.
And one thing, Mayor, I might add is also the pay plan does incorporate the three percent increase that has been proposed, so that of course can be adjusted if there's something else is done, but the pay plan itself has been increased by three percent.
So to Alderman Kinsey's point about a bonus in lieu of a raise, this would be the item to take that up at.
Correct.
So like I say, I have three things I'd like to have removed. I'm only one-sixth of the board, and I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, maybe one day these guys will get up to the six figures too, you know? I remember we had a storm, we had three workers that was devastated and no one knew until maybe a month later about that. So I feel that they, the workers work hard enough to be compensated. You often hear noise, oh, man, you're doing a great job. You're doing real good, we love you. You know, you got to show it in a monetary way. Give them the money, you know, if they work hard for it. I mean, that's how I feel about it. I'm just, like I say, I'm one-sixth. So let's, let's rethink that. Let's, let's give them a bonus, not a raise, because if you're going to get fifty-seven thousand dollars and he gets a three percent, do the math. If the guy gonna get forty thousand dollars, do the math, you know? So who, who's, who's rising to the top quick?
Well, the bonus would be three percent of that forty thousand dollars.
That's a bonus.
A one-time, a one-time thing. The three percent of his salary would be reoccurring each year. So he's going to get, make a lot more money getting a three percent increase in salary than he is with a bonus.
I'm saying the department head, okay? Listen to what I'm saying, please.
Well, the department head don't make forty thousand dollars.
Have you seen this list right here?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I'm speaking in terms of, okay?
So I'll, I'll steal the phrase from our assistant attorney. In the spirit of trying to be helpful, I think you said you had three items. So the, the pay plan is definitely relevant to the particular item we're on now. So maybe if you wanted to make a motion to give the department heads a bonus in lieu of a raise, then we could see where that goes.
Okay, let's do that.
Just a suggestion.
Okay, let's do that. And that's, that's what I'm saying.
Is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
You good with that, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a second?
We did this in the.
We did, I believe, Mr. Hughes, Jordan Hughes, Jordan Hughes came up and, and said that he would prefer the raise versus the bonus. Okay, so hearing no second, that motion dies for a lack of a second, Alderman Kinsey. Now, do you want to tackle your second issue?
Yes, the three percent. I'd rather for the, 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 the employees to have a four percent and that the board members of, of Alderman receive the same pay that the county is receiving.
Okay, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we have a motion for the COLA to go from three percent to four percent and for the Board of Alderman's salary to match the Craven County Commissioner's salary.
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions, please?
Let's see if we get a second and we can have some discussion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now we can have some discussion. Alderman Astor.
Let me just ask you a question. How, how much, Mr. Hughes, how much, do you have a clue, how much do county commissioners make?
We would have to get an update.
You got a clue about how much it is?
No, sir, I do not. I couldn't, I couldn't give you anywhere near an accurate number. We didn't, we didn't look at that this year.
I mean, I, I was kind of under the impression it's like eighteen thousand dollars or something like that. Does that sound anywhere near close?
I, I don't even want to make a comment. I could not honestly tell you what they're.
Are you looking it up?
Kim?
Yeah, but it's going to take a minute.
I don't, I don't think it's.
If it's posted.
We have found it in the past because I know the clerk, she did some polling.
Do you know how much it is?
Not currently.
What was it last time you checked?
I'd, I'd have to look it up to, to see what we last reported. I don't remember if that was last year or the year before we looked at it.
I don't, it's, it's a lot more than what this one is.
You have a, a ballot?
No, because the camera will roll and there'll be an article tomorrow that I've misquoted information, so I'm just not going to say anything.
Smart.
So we do have a motion in a second on the table. Are there any further discussion about this? I'm sorry, we didn't get an answer for you, Alderman Astor.
Kinsey, do you want to rescind your portion about the county commissioner's salary and just go along with a four percent?
I'm going to stick with what I requested.
Okay, so.
Well, they're going to look into that and report back to us. We just table that until we come back to it.
So if, if we're going to table part of that motion, the best activity would be to rescind and restate, correct?
Either, or call the question, see where it goes, and then make another motion.
Do you want to see where this, this goes, Alderman Kinsey?
Why not?
Okay, let's have a, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Royal.
May I add?
Sure.
It is very difficult to make a decision without information.
I agree.
And I wish that we could get those numbers so that we would be informed and could best serve our citizens with that information.
So I'll tell you what, can I make a suggestion? Let's, if you're, if you're both willing to rescind your motions, let's table this item till the end of our agenda and let's see if staff is able to secure that information. If they are, we can revisit it. If they haven't, then we can still take it up. We'll do that before, I guess we need to do that before we adopt the budget, though. Though we don't have, but one item that we can go to, so.
Do we try to tackle one issue of the two and see where that goes?
Okay, let's have a roll call vote on this one first and let's make this clean and then we can move on. So let's have a roll call, and I misspoke, I said Alderman Royal, I meant Alderman Prill. So roll call's Alderman Prill.
Alderman Prill?
No.
Alderman Royal?
You said we're voting on one?
We're voting on the whole motion that Alderman Kinsey made to increase the governing board's salary to the county commissioner's salary and also give a four percent COLA to all of the staff versus a three percent. That's the motion.
In light of that, because I don't have information, then I vote no.
Okay.
Alderman Astor?
No.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Excuse me, what was Alderman? I didn't hear Alderman Royal's.
She said she didn't have the information, so she couldn't make an informed vote.
But isn't that considered a yes?
No, she voted no.
Oh, that's what I didn't.
Sorry, yeah, she voted no.
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
No. So the motion fails four to two. Okay, now Alderman Kinsey, do you want to do just the COLA for the employees and try that?
Yeah.
All right, you, you want to make, make the motion to increase the COLA from three percent?
I like to make the motion to increase the COLA for the staff, four percent.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Now I'll ask the question, what is the financial impact of that by department?
A one percent increase citywide would be an additional four hundred twenty thousand dollars added to the budget, which at this time, if that is approved, would come from fund balance.
Which is close to one cent?
That is just five hundred thousand dollars shy of one penny.
Okay.
One penny is five hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Question, this is across the board, all employees?
That's the motion.
That's the motion.
Do we have any further questions?
Question for Ms. Hayes or Foster. I don't remember if it was last year or maybe two years ago, you were before us with a proposal that we significantly increase the, the classification to allow New Bern to play catch-up with other communities comparable to New Bern, which the board did do. In, in, since that time, do you have any information that would indicate where we stand essentially in competition with other jurisdictions? You know, whether or not are we starting to slip again or are we maintaining, you know, at least a competitive advantage?
So, so I will say as a disclaimer, I've not done any type of full analysis, and you referred to the market analysis, the results of that, that we recommended and you implemented. But what I will say is even as we put that in place, there were other entities around us that were still moving, they still were moving their salaries. So we may still be somewhat behind, but that is why it's important, as we see it, to increase the pay plan by at least the amount of a COLA if we can. Therefore, we're not so far behind. But I have not done any analytical studies, so I really don't want to say to you how far behind we may or may not be.
Thank you.
Do you have a clue about some of the other cities that offer as a COLA?
I think it's around three point one percent, if I'm not mistaken, Foster.
So the League of Municipalities did a survey on the eastern part of the state. That average across all municipalities was three point one percent. Some higher, some lower, but that was the average.
The, the only commentary I'll add is I've always said, when you add recurring cost to the budget that gets pulled from fund balance, you're essentially obligating future boards to cover that. I don't disagree that, I wish that we could pay our employees eight percent and double it, but we have made adjustments, a significant adjustment, as Alderman Prill brought up just a couple of years ago, and we've had COLA increases every year since then, right?
Correct, yes.
No, we, we have had COLA increases every year since then, but what we haven't had every year since then is the COLA as well as a merit increase, you know, recognizing the employees who go above and beyond. And as a result of not having a merit increase, I'm going to vote yes for the four percent.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, now let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Of course.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
No.
Mayor Odom?
No, motion carries four to.
Mayor, I have the information from the county that we pulled in 2022.
Okay.
At that time, the city had.
the city had, the city's mayor's information was $16,143.10. Mayor Proten was $11,975.88, and an Alderman was $11,098.88. There has been, I believe, since then, a 3% adjustment that was applied to the Alderman. At that time, the county, the chairman was $15,202.72, which was less than the mayor's seat. Commissioners were $13,718.38, which was slightly above the Alderman.
Okay. Board get that information. Alderman Kinsey, do you want to try a motion on that?
Yes, let's vote on it.
Okay, what's your motion?
My motion is to, to vote, to salary change to the same as the commissioners.
Does that mean the mayor gets the cut in pay?
Well, I will say, they each also received, at that time, a $550 a month travel stipend.
$550 a month?
A month.
Maybe I'm on the wrong side of Broad Street. A month? Okay. So, $550 a month for Ms. Finance Director, I don't have my calculator up, $550 a month, 12 months.
Sixty-six hundred dollars.
Sixty-six, so $6,600 in addition to their $15,000 salary? Okay, so Alderman Kinsey, where are you on this?
We're going to vote on it, young man.
All right, so you want to make a motion, do you want to cover their travel expenses or just their salary?
I'm going to have to start the travel.
Okay.
We're going to vote on the salary.
Okay, so Alderman Kinsey has made a motion for the City of New Bern Board of Alderman to match the Craven County Commissioner's salary.
As of 2022 or whatever number we don't know currently?
The number we don't know right now.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second? Hearing none, the motion dies for a lack of a second.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the classification pay plan for fiscal year 2526, which will include the 4%.
Second?
COLA for the employees.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve item number 20. Is there further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Grade 12 permitting technician, that's not the one I was looking for. What is the, does this include the custodian?
The custodian position is in the classification plan. You may want to wait until we get to the budget itself on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
No. Motion carries five to one. Next up is item number 21, consider adopting ordinance amending the schedule of fees and changes, Ms. Ostrom.
As part of the budget process, the board annually adopts an amended schedule of fees and charges to, in part, identify, in one place, all the fees charged by the city. These identified in the schedule are included in the revenue projections for fiscal year 202526 and will be effective July 1, 2025. There is also a redline version of the schedule included.
Does the board have questions? Only one I have is, I scanned through and I believe we've got them all corrected, where in-city and out-of-city are, in-city fees basically half of what out-of-city fee is correct on everything. That's correct. It's a pleasure, the board, on item number 21.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the schedule of fees and charges.
Second? Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
I'm sorry, Alderman Kinsey.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next up is item number 22, consider adopting a budget ordinance for FY 2526, Ms. Ostrom.
As noted earlier, the city manager presented the proposed budget on April 8, and the budget workshop was held on April 28. The public hearing was advertised for this meeting date. After taking into consideration discussions held at the workshop and comments received earlier during the hearing, the board is asked to give its final consideration for the proposed budget.
Does the board have questions or comments on item number 22?
Yes. Again, if you would walk me through the employee that will provide service partially paid by the MSD and by the city.
So, as we discussed during the work session, I gave a follow-up and an email correspondence to the board. Currently, there is a part-time custodian position that is based out of City Hall, and that position is paid for out of the general fund. The recommendation is to turn that position into a full-time position with a portion of that being paid, still being paid by the general fund, and the rest being paid by the MSD fund. So, if the board approves of that, then that custodian would also have responsibilities within the downtown area, within the MSD area. And so, the items that I pointed out would be to, of course, clean the Cub House, being responsible for going down to the new pier, cleaning that, post new restroom down there, checking the restrooms at Union Point Park, also cleaning the fountain in James Reed Lane, walking around all of the sidewalks in the downtown area at the appropriate times, spraying weed killer, picking up trash and things like that, notifying the Public Works Department if there are any issues that need to be addressed immediately. So, really, eyes on the person that is dedicated to the downtown.
Another question I have, in case, let's say hurricane, in case of some other issues outside the footprint of the MSD, would that custodian be only obligated through duties and responsibilities to the MSD footprint, or could, in a case of needing him somewhere else, in case of an emergency, that that flexibility would be built in?
There is flexibility because 100% of that salary would not be paid by the MSD. It's, Kim, what was the percentage that we looked at? Almost 50% would come from MSD, almost 50% would come from the general fund. So, there would be flexibility in that.
And so, in the job and description, I definitely would like that language included, that flexibility part, to make sure when we talk about responsibilities, that that person, whoever it is that would be hired, would understand the flexibility part of it.
I know in our budget session, we also discussed about whether, like, outsourcing this position. So, I didn't know what...
So, we did ask Public Works to give some quotes on outsourcing that. Contractor that they're using for other locations, they did receive a price for five days a week, five hours per day, was $39,000 per year. Currently, for our part-time employee that's working 20 hours a week, I believe we're paying approximately $17,000 a year. So, it would be almost double what we would be paying if we contracted that out.
I'm going to further complicate the discussion. So, who is this individual going to report to?
That individual does report to Public Works.
Okay.
The building manager superintendent.
So, who's going to manage the time to ensure that the MSD that's paying 50%, that 50% of that individual's time is spent inside the MSD and not inside a city building?
The Public Works supervisor would be responsible for that.
Could you please silence your cell phones? Thank you. Okay. It sounded like to me, everything that you listed off, it's probably about 90% outside of this building and Cub House, but that's just me. We're still on item number 22, discussing the proposed budget. Alderman Royal, did you get your answer to your question?
I did. I just want to, again, reiterate, I would definitely like that language included in whatever the job description may entail.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, before we approve this, I have a question, because I know in our budget session, we did not cover whether or not we were going, we didn't vote on whether or not we felt that Ms. Oster needed that Assistant Finance Director. So, I would like to have some input from the board on how you feel that if she needs this position. I know we did talk about hiring one full-time person, and then we talked about actually two part-time people for that position, well, not that position, but to fill the gap in for her in the finance department. So, I think that needs to be addressed before we approve this budget.
Ms. Ostrom sat here tonight and answered every question that was asked of her from the public as well as from this Alderman. She's also advised this board that she needs assistance. The city manager has also advised this board that she needs an assistant. Based on that information, and again, I'm not going to get into FEMA stuff too much, but I've watched them at work, and any time that you have a disaster and FEMA is involved, you're talking hundreds of hours of extra work, not standard work, but extra work. And some of these FEMA obligations go for, are we still just on Francine now? I mean, Florence, excuse me, thank you. We still just on Florence, or have we closed out the other ones as well? Some of the others?
No, we've closed out most of the other ones, but Florence right now is our main one that we're working on.
Okay. But when did we, what was the, we just closed one out not too long ago that you've been working on?
Dorian.
Dorian? So, I mean, Dorian has just been closed out within the past year. So, you're talking a tremendous amount of work above and beyond her normal duties. So, taking that into consideration, I'm going to take the city manager's recommendation. He's our CEO, and I'm going to take our department head's recommendation, and I'm going to recommend that we give the lady some help in that department.
Anyone else have comments?
I think that we, as a board, should have an opportunity, each board member, to vote on if that's a position that they want to have added.
So, you could make a motion to remove the Assistant Finance Director from the proposed budget?
No, I'm not saying I want to remove that position. I'm just, we did not, we covered this in our retreat.
I agree.
We did not vote on whether or not we, as a board, wanted this position. Ms. Kim has said she needs the help. I'm not denying that. They worked really hard. But we, as a board, did not conclude whether or not we all agreed with that and vote on it.
Mayor, may I make a motion, please?
Sure.
I would like to make a motion that in the fiscal year 2526 budget, that we include an Assistant Director of Finance for our Director of Finance.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to include, now, my question, Mr. Attorney, it's in the proposed budget. Alderman Astor is making a motion to confirm what's there, and I'm going to speculate and just ask you if it's a 3-3, what would happen?
Well, I think that's confusing.
It would still stay in there, correct?
I would just recommend, if it's in the budget, then vote on the budget.
And withdraw my motion.
Alderman Prill, will you withdraw your second?
Withdraw the second.
And then I'll change it by making a motion that we adopt the budget ordinance for fiscal year 2526.
Second? Okay, so we have a motion and a second to adopt the proposed budget ordinance for FY 2526.
Wait, hold it. There, Alderman may have other additional questions in reference to this budget.
It's open for discussion right now, but we have a second.
Before we, you know, move forward with this. No, that was just my statement. Also, we, and also, we discussed how our CDBG money was, we did not finalize how that CDBG money was going to be utilized. As a board, we did not make that decision, if that was going to go to the Redevelopment Commission, or if that was going to go, stay.
It's in the proposed budget as being part of Development Services, it has always been, correct?
Yes.
The allocation is a separate thing. We won't get an allocation until later for that. And so, we, as that comes up at a future meeting, we can have a discussion on that, but as a reminder, CDBG allocations come to the city. And I don't think we have the ability to say, well, we're going to turn that program over to another entity. We have to manage and maintain that. Now, the Redevelopment Commission or any of the nonprofit can apply through the program for funds as long as they qualify for the criteria that CDBG establishes.
So, essentially, this budget makes no change to the CDBG?
It does not.
Okay. Any other questions? This is about the whole budget, so if you have anything regarding the budget. Okay, I hear no further discussion, so let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Best.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
I was going to vote yes until the percent of COLA changed to four, and I'm voting no because I don't believe that's the right decision. So, I'm going to, the passage regardless is five to one. Budget's been adopted. Thank you for the staff, for their hard work this year, putting that together. Moving on to item number 23, consider adopting a resolution approving a declaration of intent to reimburse the FY 2526 vehicles and equipment, Ms. Ostrom.
The FY 2526 budget includes the purchase of capital items for vehicles and equipment totaling $1,989,217. IRS regulations requires the board to adopt a declaration of official intent to reimburse, allowing the city to pay itself back for items that will potentially be paid for prior to obtaining the respective financing.
Does the board have questions?
If there is no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution, approval and declaration of intent to reimburse fiscal year 2526 vehicles and equipment.
Second? Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Prill.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next is item number 24, consider adopting an ordinance to amend Sections 1576, 1579, 1580, 1582, 1584, and 1585 of land use ordinance, Mr. Goff.
Evening, Mayor and the board again. We're actually before you again today with a revised version of this. Staff has worked with the city attorney's office to create the revision to add in noticing adjacent owners by mail. And if there are any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer that, but nothing else has really changed on that. And some specifics may be best answered by Scott, so I would prefer to him on some things.
Does the board have questions on item number 24? As a reminder, this is the one we talked about at the last meeting. We, more guessing direction, changed the notification, and that's been done so in this new update.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the ordinance to amend Sections 1576, 1579, 1580, 1582, 1584, and 1585 of the land use ordinance.
Second? Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on item number 24? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Next is item number 25, consider adopting an ordinance to amend Chapter 86, Waterways, Section 86-1, fishing and crabbing prohibited at certain locations, Mr. Hughes.
So, in anticipation of the new... So, in anticipation of the new Riverwalk Fishing Pier being opened, we are requesting that the board consider the amendment to this ordinance to exclude the fishing pier itself, but this ordinance makes unlawful to fish or crab in the northernmost section of Council Bluff Green at the Riverwalk, all the way down to Union Point Park, going where the rivers meet, back toward the hotels, all the way to the western portion of the North Carolina Railroad, to ban fishing or crabbing in that area, on public property.
And if I remember correctly, where it picks up, at the train trestle behind the History Center is already prohibited by the state. There are signs up there that say no fishing. I'm not going to say I don't know some people who's fished there before, but I know there are signs that say no fishing. So, this would essentially carry that all the way around our Riverwalk, with the exception of Palace Point Commons?
That's correct.
Okay. Because Palace Point Commons is a hotspot for fishing.
It is.
Okay. Does the board understand?
Did you say with the exception of Palace Commons?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that is not included in this resolution. Is there a projected time for the fishing pier to be completed?
We're going to talk about that at the Manager's Report in just a moment.
Foster, obviously, with this change, a fair amount of enforcement or education is going to be required, and I'm specifically thinking of Council Bluff Green because that is a somewhat popular place for fishermen and people throwing lines out at the ground. How are you envisioning that, the education and/or enforcement is going to be done, and by who?
So, signage will be going up if this board approves that, and there will be small signs, about eight by eight, that will go up in certain areas along the Riverwalk itself so the public will know. Police Department will be monitoring that. North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission is also subject to monitor that as well. Of course, we'll remind folks that that's what our fishing pier is for, and I think that, based on the feedback we've gotten from the fishing pier, I think it's going to be quite popular.
If I could make one suggestion, you know, I'm the sign guy. I think it would be very important, when you put no fishing allowed here, is to list the city ordinance on there because that really provides some teeth. When people are looking at a sign that just says no fishing, eh, I'll take a chance, but if it lists the city ordinance, then there, it's a little different, so.
Being that this resolution would become effective immediately when we approve it, is that correct?
That's correct.
And being that, I am not aware of the timeline with the new fishing pier. That would help shape my decision.
Soon. Very soon, okay, I'll go ahead and give you the information.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
So, you're taking one of my eyes, that's okay. So, we're planning on having a ribbon-cutting grand opening for the new pier on Friday, May 23rd, right before Memorial Weekend, at 10:00 a.m. So, really, the signs won't go up until the pier opens because we're going to let, we're going to give people that two-week grace period to let them know, hey, once this pier opens, no fishing along the Riverwalk.
That made all the difference in the world. Now I know how to vote. Thank you.
Is there any other questions on item number 25?
Mayor, I'm making a motion to adopt an ordinance to amend Chapter 86 Waterways, Section 86-1, fishing and crabbing prohibited at certain locations.
Second?
Have a motion. Alderman Pril and a second by Alderman Royal. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey? Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, that motion carries. Next up is appointments. Does the board have any appointments tonight? Okay?
Mayor, before we jump on the next item, we had a number of people address this board earlier this evening with regards to filling the vacancy for Ward 6 Alderman. I don't anticipate that we are in a position that's different than what we've been in up to this point in time, but you never know. So, I would like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Darlene Brown as the Ward 6 Alderman.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Best.
Alderman Best?
Excuse me, sir, do you think we should make Alderman, I want to do this the right way, have Alderman Pril present, I mean Alderman Kinsey present?
That's up to the board. City Attorney, do you have?
I would want the same consideration.
Okay. Mr. Sergeant at Arms, would you mind finding Alderman Kinsey?
Mayor, in the spirit of efficiency, I've got one item to report. Why don't I knock that out real quick while we wait?
We have a motion and a second. Are you?
Let's see, let's see.
I'll, I can fill some time while we wait for Alderman Kinsey. I appreciate the folks coming out tonight. I really appreciate the ones in Ward 6 that came out tonight. We are in the month of May, and we have June, July, August, September, we have four meetings, I believe, until the election. That doesn't discount the fact that the Ward 6 seat is vacant. I pushed very fervently at the beginning of this to fill this position with someone who was qualified, experienced, and capable. We are at a point now where you're putting your hands on the scale of the election, and I realize that Ms. Brown sent us all an email and said she wasn't going to run for office, that she would like to serve out the term, very respectful email of her, and I appreciate that, but at this point in time, I would not vote, I'm not voting for anyone to fill this position. The citizens in Ward 6 will choose that on October 7th. Okay? You're more than welcome to do that, but this is our meeting, and if you continue to do that, I'll ask you to leave. Okay? So, we'd like to have a roll call vote, starting with, the motion on the floor is to appoint Darlene Brown to the Ward 6 seat. So, we have a motion and a second, and we will start the roll call with Alderman Kinsey. Go here back now.
Alderman Kinsey?
Well, I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
Based on qualifications, I think that's something that I've heard tonight about how qualified a person is. So, I don't understand the definition. Would you think, ex-mayor Alderman, would you think he qualified to fill that seat? That's your opinion. You use your own opinion. I respect your opinion, respect mine, okay? That's all I ask you to do. Okay? If you can't do that, hey, that's on you. My opinion is, a qualified person is Dana Outlaw.
Alderman Kinsey, would you like to vote yes or no, please?
Yes, for Dana Outlaw.
No, this is, the motion on the floor is for Darlene Brown.
Oh, no, sir.
Okay, so we have a no from Alderman Kinsey.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Pril?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
No.
Mayor Odom?
No, and I just want to publicly say thank you to Alderman Best for taking that approach and allowing Alderman Kinsey to come back. If somebody thinks that I'm lying, if you want to make a motion to approve Dana Outlaw, I'll vote accordingly as well.
Was your no a vote, Mayor?
Mine was a no. Yes, ma'am.
It was 3-3.
It was 3-3, so there's no action taken.
I thought you said you weren't going to vote.
I'm not voting for anyone, so. Okay? If you continue outverse, I'll ask you to leave. Next up is the Attorney's Report.
Mayor, members of the board, one quick matter, I wanted to dip back into.
I'm going to allow you a few minutes to leave. Okay, Mr. Attorney.
Yes, Mayor, members of the board, I wanted to dip back into Alderman Royal's earlier question in the meeting regarding the ordinance amendment, the land use ordinance.
Sorry, can't hear you.
All right, just give it a minute for the House to clear out. Mr. Sergeant at Arms, would you please shut the door when they exit if it's not? Or actually, our police chief's going to handle that. Thank you, sir.
Alderman Royal asked a question during the meeting about how a citizen initiated the ordinance amendment that was on the agenda, and my sense was your question was more precise than the response you got. I think, my sense was you were confused about how a citizen had a right to initiate a land use amendment, and I wanted to clarify that there are only three bodies that can do that, that would be a Department Head, Planning and Zoning Board, and this board. Technically, those are the three entities that have a right to initiate an ordinance amendment. In this case, a bit of semantics, a citizen approached the Department Head with an idea to amend the ordinance. So technically, this was initiated by the Department Head, although the idea originated with a citizen. So, two big points. Citizens don't have a right to initiate the ordinance, but they have an absolute right to do three things. They can approach Department Heads with their good ideas. If it's a land use issue, they can approach the Planning and Zoning Board with their good ideas, and they can always approach you with their good ideas. Whether the process gets triggered is up to the Department Head, Planning and Zoning Board, or you. Does that help?
It does, but that's not how it read.
Exactly, and I knew that was going to confuse you when I saw it. Yes, ma'am. That's why I wanted to clarify this. I didn't want citizens to have the idea that they could just start submitting ordinance amendments, and you would be forced to address them whether you like them or not.
And that's how it did appear.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir, thank you so much.
Anything else?
No, sir.
City Manager's Report.
So, again, the Riverwalk Fishing Pier grand opening and ribbon cutting will be on Friday, May 23rd, at 10:00 a.m. A reminder that Footloose on the News returns on Friday, May 23rd as well with the Journey Tribute Band Trial by Fire. New Times for the Concert Series at 7:30 p.m. Also, Parks and Recreation will be offering Play Day at the Park on Saturday, May 24th, at Union Point Park. The Aquatic Center also opens for the summer on May 24th, and as a reminder, for Memorial Day, city offices will be closed on May 26th. That's all I have tonight.
Okay, new business, starting with Alderman Pril.
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
When did you say the ribbon cutting or ground?
That will be Friday, May 23rd, at 10:00 a.m. We'll put it on your calendar.
Thank you, sir.
It's already on there.
Thank you.
New business, Alderman Pril?
Nothing this evening, Mayor.
Okay, Alderman Royal?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I want to announce that I, Alderman Best, and myself will be hosting a citywide town hall meeting on this Thursday, May 15th, at the Stanley White Rec Center at 6:30 p.m. I welcome the opportunity for all of my colleagues to be present. I hope that you will be there. There's the same issues that we're discussing tonight. Our staff will be available there and to engage our citizens. Folks have a lot of questions. There's a lot of concerns. There's rumors out. I think that the citizens deserve the correct answers, and that we make ourselves available to engage them and provide the information that they seek. So, again, that's May 15th, this coming Thursday, 6:30 p.m., at the Stanley White Rec Center, and I certainly hope that all of us will show up. Thank you.
And Alderman Royal, let me propose, that was a great segue, to a motion to call a special meeting for that same date, time, and place. In the event you get a quorum at that meeting, it would be better to have that proper notice just in case, to comply with the open meetings law. There are a dog to engage our citizens, and folks have a lot of questions. There's a lot of concerns. There's.
Got to love technology. That was my question I was going to ask.
Yes, sir. My goodness.
Do we have enough time to advertise it?
You don't need to. If we just call a special meeting tonight during this regular meeting, then it counts for public notice, as the world is watching, and then you can call that meeting for Thursday evening, in the event a quorum shows up.
I got so distracted by my watch, say it again.
Yes, ma'am. In the event a quorum of this board shows up, it would require, that would make it an official board meeting, and in that event, I would suggest that you or anyone make a motion to have a special meeting for this Thursday at the date, time, and place you suggested for a special meeting to discuss city matters.
Thank you so much, so moved.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we have, hold on, we've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, we have a second now, Alderman Astor.
What happens if we don't show up and there's no quorum?
That's fine.
It still take place?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, it's never wrong if there's not a quorum. It's always wrong that there's a quorum without notice.
Got you.
So, this is just protective, just in case.
Thank you.
So, my question would be is, what is the agenda going to be for that meeting?
Well, it will be to discuss, I think, any general city issue, but you will not be able to take any action.
Okay, that's the clarity that I want.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, no action can be taken without, and just what, the point the mayor's making is, the notice would require something more precise. So, this would just be more of an information sharing and discussion.
Okay.
Absolutely.
You good with that?
Yes, sir.
Alderman Best, you good with that? You seconded it, correct?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second for a special call meeting at Stanley White Recreation Center Thursday at 6:30?
Yes.
You have that, Ms. Clerk?
May 15th.
May 15th.
6:30.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, we good there?
Yes, sir, please.
I'm not recording.
The city will not be recording it. But it's an open meeting, so anybody can record it. Okay, anything else, Alderman Royal?
No, sir.
Okay, Alderman Astor?
The only thing I'd like to say is, I'd like to thank.
Excuse me, excuse me a second. Before we move forward, will the city clerk need to be present?
If we have a quorum, I would think she would need to be.
Someone needs to take minutes. Doesn't have to be the clerk.
Well, let's ask this. Obviously, you two are going to be there because you're hosting it, I assume. I plan to be there. Is there anybody else who's planning to be there?
I may.
Yeah, I just put it on my calendar.
Okay, so we're covered, and we probably should coordinate out of courtesy with the clerk to let her know if, can we do this? Is everybody good letting the clerk know by 5 o'clock on Thursday if you're going to attend the town hall or not? Is everybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay. Are you good with that, Alderman Best? Okay, we're covered now. Now, I lost my track. Alderman Astor, new business.
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I let her know right now?
Will it?
Instead of letting her know Thursday by 5:00?
Well, I mean, I assume you two are going to be there since you hosted. I was kind of really talking to the other ones, but if it really wants to say yes, you're going to be there.
Okay.
Alderman Astor?
I was going to say something, I can't even remember what it is now myself. Oh, I know what it is. With all this rain that we've had in the past couple days, I just wanted to thank George and his staff for the hard work. I had them out. We've been in the backyards, walking and trying to figure out if there's some blockages in somewhere. It's the worst work in the world you can ever do, when you're walking around in snake-infested floodwaters, and, you know, they deserve kudos, and I appreciate everything that they do.
Yes, sir.
And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Kinsey, new business.
Not tonight.
Alderman Best, new business.
Yes, I do. I would like to have put our next Board of Alderman's meeting under the consent agenda. I would like to have called for a resolution, called for a public hearing to adjust electric rates. I think that more information needs to be provided to our citizens about these electric rates. I know at our retreat that it was, the City Manager stated that this was going to be something that would become covered later on in the summer, June, July, August, and I just think that we are, we're just continuously putting this off, putting this off. putting this off, putting this off, and Mr. Bouchard has already come before this board numerous times and letting us know that, that the electric department is in trouble, and I just think that we need to go ahead and, considering we are not meeting but once a month here for May, June, July, and August, I think we need to go ahead and put this on the agenda, and so we can have more discussion.
You, you said so, you wanted to call for a public hearing to be on our next consent agenda, meaning we would call for a public hearing in June for a public hearing in July?
Well, if it goes under consent agenda, can't we have discussion at that point, Mr. City Attorney?
So, so one thing I would recommend is if, if the board calls for the public hearing, is that we have a workshop the afternoon of the June meeting, that way, the electric utility director can provide his recommendation, the board can have discussion on that at that time, so if the board would like to entertain this, possibly 3:00 on, is it June?
10.
On 3:00 on June 10th for a workshop to discuss the electric utility rates, and then that even, it could be on the consent agenda for the next meeting.
And I did, Mr. Bouchard comes forth to us at our budget retreat and gave us that information, what he was requesting?
What he talked about, what he talked about was 3% or 4.5%, but what...
Right.
But what he hasn't come up with was how the exact rates were going to be reflected, which...
But that's why I called for a rate adjustment, for discussion on rate adjustment, and so you're saying that we need to have some type of little workshop before we get to that point?
That's correct, so you can see, see that information, and if you have any other questions at that time, we'll be happy to answer those questions.
I don't mean to pick on you, Mr. Bouchard, but are you good with that?
Just to bring that in for a landing.
Okay.
The notion is that there will be a pre-meeting, but, but Alderman Best's idea of having a call for the public hearing on the June agenda for the July public hearing is in play, that's, that's where we're going.
Yes, if, and I'm quite sure Mr. Bouchard, that would give him time enough to get any information that he needs together, which you probably already have together, but I don't know how is that going to affect you.
Point of order, can you clarify, did we get a second on her motion?
Not yet.
Okay.
I don't think we know what it is, that's where I was going, is...
Where?
Yeah.
She made a motion, I thought, to have the consent agenda at our next meeting, have a call for a public hearing, and we didn't get a second, we were discussing it, so...
Yes, yes, yes.
Do we have a second to Alderman Best's motion, and then we can continue the discussion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now, Mr. Bouchard.
Appreciate the support and the discussion on the matter, I'm a little confused on, is the intent to take the vote at the next meeting, or that's where...
That's the clarification.
That's the clarification I need in order to prepare and advertise according to North Carolina law.
We can, we couldn't, we couldn't take that action.
So, the, yeah, the plan is, there will be a pre-meeting in June, where it's going to be the Charlie Show to discuss the rates with the board. On that June agenda, the motion that's been seconded is to call for the public hearing at the July meeting, where the board will go thumbs up, thumbs down on the new rates.
And between June and July, we would advertise?
Yes, sir.
So, you good with that?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
I, best, okay.
Okay, everybody good with that? Let's have a roll call on this one, starting with, my pages look terrible, who did we start the last roll call with, Ms. Clerk? I believe it was Alderman, it was Alderman Astor, so it'd be Alderman Kinsey.
I'm telling you, it was Kinsey, but I don't make...
It was, it was Alderman Kinsey on the motion to appoint someone, so it's Alderman Best.
And what is the vote again?
To call for a public hearing that will be on our consent agenda in June, that will have the, the public hearing in July, is that correct?
That's correct, to adjust electric rates.
So, it's a motion to put the item on the agenda to call for a public hearing?
Thank you.
Correct, so we are at Alderman Best, starting the roll call, please.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
No.
Okay, we'll be on the next agenda, anything else?
Let's go back to the pre-meeting, what, what was it?
That's very good, thank you, we would need to call for a special meeting, what time?
3:00 p.m.
3:00 p.m. June 10th at City Hall?
And that meeting is for what again?
For Charlie to make his presentation on what he wants the electric rates to go
So, entertain a motion for a special call meeting, June 10th at City Hall at 3:00 p.m.?
Yes, I call for a special meeting to, at City Hall, June 10th at 3:00 p.m.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mayor Prosser and Prill, are you going to be here on June the 10th at 3:00?
Yes.
Okay, you'll have to run the meeting because I will not. Do we have any further discussion?
One question, I'm sorry, can we drop that time back to 4:00?
It's up to the board.
Does it take three hours? Will it take three hours, Mr. Bouchard?
No, ma'am.
How long will it take, you think?
It'll largely depend on how many questions I receive, but I presented the information a month ago, so it would probably be just a, a review of that, and answering your questions and discussing your ideas, so I would, I would say less than an hour.
Less than an hour?
That I need, if I just run through it.
4:30, that gives the board some time between the 6:00 meeting and a little cushion if you want to do that. Okay, so I had Alderman Best and Alderman Prill that made a motion and a second, are you two good with adjusting that to 4:30?
Yes.
Mr. Attorney, you clear with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, that would be me, I'm a no, I'll try my best to move some things around. Anything else, Alderman Best?
That is it.
Okay, only new business I have, Mr. Attorney, I apologize, I didn't give you a heads up, but I know you've been working on this, can you please inform everyone watching, everyone here, how the billboard got installed along MLK next to the mall?
Yes, sir, like you, I've, I've run into a number of unhappy citizens about this. To be clear, our state statutes give the Department of Transportation exclusive jurisdiction over billboards within our primary highway corridors to a distance of 660 feet, excuse me, our primary highway corridors are Highway 70 that runs through the city, east to west, and Highway 17 south from Highway 70 south, those are the two primary corridors, DOT has sole authority to issue permits within those corridors. In this case, the matter was even out of DOT's hands, and then we have a state statute that provides when a state condemns outdoor advertising for highway projects, the owner of that billboard that's been condemned can relocate it within those primary corridors. In this case, we just learned late this afternoon that there were several billboards condemned out at the Highway 43 connector, so the billboard that is going in on MLK near the AT&amp;T store is, is one of those relocated billboards, so unfortunately, the matter is, is beyond our control, and even beyond DOT's control, they certainly issued the permit, but when they issue it, their job is to verify the facts, and once those facts are verified, and the owner has a lease, then that owner has a right to locate the billboard in that location.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
So, are we expecting more?
I do not know, I just noticed today that there were three, so I, I don't know, a little, I've not heard anything about this, I've heard some gossip for the last three or four months about this one, and no others, so I'm hoping this is the only one.
So, so Scott, maybe you can clarify, this one is being relocated that's around Ben Quinn School, it's for the new interchange where the 43 connector comes in based off of the map that, that attorney sent us.
Yes, sir.
So, that's in the city limits, so if there is a condemned billboard in James City that's outside of the city limits, they can't locate that in the city.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, yeah, the state statute that authorizes the relocation is jurisdiction-specific, meaning if you're outside the city, you can't move a sign in the city, if you're in Kinston, you can't move a Kinston billboard to New Bern, you stay within the jurisdiction, that's why this is, is done with what's called as a matter of right, so unfortunate for folks, but that's where we are, hopefully, others in that corridor will not enter into leases for billboards in that corridor.
Can we restrict billboards inside the city limits with size as it is?
We can, and we do, with this exception, the state statute trumps our ordinances in that, that statute, it gives this control to DOT within 660 feet of those corridors, so within that area, we don't have any jurisdiction.
So, now that that has been confirmed, for anybody else who would like to call and complain and register some concerns about the billboard on MLK, please reach out to your state House Representative Steve Tyson, or your state Senator, former Alderman, now Senator Bob Brinson, because they control that.
Yes, sir.
I think we should reach out to them, I think we should do, you know, we should be opposed to that, and we should tell them that we're not real happy with them putting billboards in our city.
How does, how does the board feel about that?
I don't have a problem reaching out to, to express...
So, I could make a recommendation that we have a resolution prepared?
Sure.
That the board can take formal action to send and make our voice heard, but I also encourage the many, many citizens I've heard from since last week to do so.
Well, I think you ought to call Senator Brinson and give him a heads up that it's coming too, and this is, they're telling that how...
Sure. And just as set expectations, that is a perfectly appropriate approach, but we're talking about a statutory amendment that will happen in a legislative session that is effectively older for this year, or this, this current session, so...
The signs aren't going to be moved, that sign is there.
That, that is correct, but the long game is to amend the statute, to the extent you're displeased.
Okay, does the board, we had planned to do the city managers' annual evaluation, does the board still want to do that tonight?
Did we receive, did all members do an evaluation?
I received five.
So, we're missing one, is that correct?
That is, and it's anonymous, so I don't know who it is.
Okay.
If we do not do it tonight, then what?
Well, my thought would be is that we, we do something and let the, the one Alderman that did not submit an evaluation, time to submit evaluation, and we do it maybe at the next meeting or something, I don't know, it's up to y'all, we'll do one.
I don't, I don't have a problem with it doing it tonight.
I don't either.
Is that a motion?
No, I'm just saying, I, I guess we got to figure out who members are.
Can we get a motion so we can get some determination?
That would be pursuant to 143, 3211A6, for personnel matters.
So, Mr. Mayor?
I have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in closed session.
Just too fast, so I was going to ask for a break.
We got, we got a group going up.